Thank you very much, Council, for having us here this evening. And I'm Mary Blackstone. I'm a long-term resident of the City of Ellsworth and long-term taxpayer. Gary Fordyer, my colleague on Green Ellsworth likewise. And we're also both long-term Green Ellsworth participants. We were involved in the beginnings. I was representing the Ellsworth Garden Club, which was a co-partner in starting Green Ellsworth. And Gary was representing the City of Ellsworth, which was the other co-partner in starting Green Ellsworth. So we're here tonight to first and foremost answer any questions that you have with respect to the budget advice document that we provided for you. Does everybody has? I'm not sure how your books operate, but you all have a copy of the document. Good.
It's not in the books. It was emailed.
It was emailed, yeah.
Okay. Does everybody have a copy of the document? Because I did bring a few extra if people don't.
I could use a copy if you have one with you.
I need one too.
Don't trip on that cord.
Try not to.
I could run in and make more copies.
I need one too, Mary. Sorry, thank you. I can share. Steve, do you want?
Is there a way we can? I read them.
I can make one.
That's all right. I understand.
I wasn't, I brought backup, but I wasn't sure. I thought everybody would have it.
I didn't, I forgot my iPad, so I'm sorry. Or I would have it.
All right. Should I wait until everybody has a copy or shall I proceed? Okay. So as I said, the goal tonight is to first and foremost answer any questions. I do have a bit of a presentation here, but I'm not exactly sure what kind of timeline you're planning on. So maybe first I better find that out before I start my presentation.
I'd like to hear it all.
Oh, the sky's the limit. Okay. Then I will recite. I will recite the memory of the Ellsworth Green Plan.
I think we'll be out by eight.
Okay. All right. Well, I think you will definitely be out by eight. So then I'll start by glossing some of the recommendations. My part in this presentation is to talk about this year's budget, and Gary is going to talk about the second year's budget. We tried to show you two years out, just so you have a sense of our timelines. And for, just for understanding that, you actually, it's not a mystery because we actually, in the Green Plan, at the very end, the appendix, has all of the recommendations listed. And unlike comprehensive plans, we actually put a specific time to those recommendations, identify specific parties who are responsible, and identify the financial implications of all of those. So the recommendations that you see coming forward for this year are ones that were put on a timeline for doing this year. Recommendations for next year are on a similar timeline. So we've put ourselves to be quite accountable with respect to this plan. The recommendations that are in the plan and that inform this budget document were derived from what now, with our last Union River Summit, are now over 40 public forums and consultations with a wide diversity of topics and individuals providing input. And the goal behind the plan, which informs our budget advice, is to make Ellsworth quite simply a more sustainable community. And that reads in four specific areas. It relates to water. It relates to land use and things related to land use. It relates to food and farming. And it relates to infrastructure, whether that's roads and transportation, or whether it relates to energy and waste management. So those are the areas we carved out. There's a few recommendations that relate to things like housing and whatever that are not segregated out into those specific chapters. So that's also is meant to explain something of the organization of the budget advice. It comes directly from the way the plan is structured. So the recommendations here from a budget, there are a lot of recommendations that are not budgetary in their implication or focus. But the ones that are in this document that you received, they fall into three major categories. One is budgeting for grant applications, and that is one thing that I think the city has not historically necessarily included in its budget, while it has certainly applied for grants. It's not been thinking of that necessarily in the context of budget. I come from a nonprofit background, and so nonprofits organize their budgets around specifically grant applications. So that's sort of my take on this. But in the current context, where in the last year federally so much money has come down the pike, the City of Ellsworth really needs to start thinking about budgeting specifically for grant applications that can double or triple taxpayer dollars. And so that's one of the sustainability objectives, overall sustainability objectives. A second category of recommendation has to do with money to put us in a position to secure more funds, or to do things more efficiently, or basically save further deferred debt. And largely, one of the areas, for instance, that we look at as really classified as deferred debt are things such as our stormwater system. And we've seen in the last, certainly the last year, where sudden major catastrophes with respect to our stormwater system have clearly resulted in the need to spend money right then. And, you know, that's going to get more and more of a burden on the city if we don't address that deferred debt, which is in the form of infrastructure that needs renewal. So that classification is really spend money now so we're not spending five times that amount down the line. The third category really has to do with putting people, plans, data in place in order to increase our revenue and make Ellsworth a better place to live ultimately, live and own a business. So there is an overall strategy behind these recommendations that are basically around the whole good management of money so that we have more money down the line to spend rather than suddenly finding ourselves seriously in debt because we can't defer the debt any longer. So looking then at the specifics of the recommendations, I think Council in the last year felt, okay, we've allocated the $100,000 to the comprehensive plan, and we got that kind of off our plate, and now we can perhaps move on to other things. But one of the challenges, I think, is with the comprehensive plan is that Ellsworth hasn't been strategically doing smaller plans for the last few years. So the comprehensive plan is not, it's not going to be easily built on smaller plans that can feed into that comprehensive plan. And for most cities these days, the comprehensive plan pulls together the recommendations of all kinds of smaller plans rather than doing it all, trying to do everything under the umbrella of the comprehensive plan. So planning, in other words, is something that is ongoing. So some of the items that are listed on the first page of this budget advice document relate to things that, it's hard to imagine how a substantial comprehensive plan could be meaningful for the next 10 years if it's not built on some of this information. And so some of it has a price tag of actual taxpayer dollars, but some of it, such as the stormwater vulnerability assessment, is something that can be paid for 100% by the Community Resilience Partnership Program. So these are opportunities to quickly get that money, certainly through that grant, and make this information available to the comprehensive planning process so that we don't finish a comprehensive plan and then get information that should have been in the comprehensive plan. So these are, it's not too late to do some of these, and it would be a much stronger comprehensive plan if they are put in place. So the, I mentioned the stormwater vulnerability assessment. I think that might be top of mind. Certainly, it was for staff when they were proposing the Community Resilience Partnership application. But something that, two things that are clearly also very important have to do with the fiscal impact analysis, which is essentially figuring out where is our money coming from? And how does that jive with where we're spending it? And I don't know that the City of Ellsworth has ever had a fiscal impact analysis done on its budget, and there are people here who may have longer memory with respect to the budget of the city. But I think it could be really important and interesting to have that information down the line, especially if we're looking at recommendations as part of a comprehensive plan. Just an example of that, before we had the most recent reassessment, the city acquired fully one-third of its tax revenue from shorefront property. Now we've just had another assessment, so it is almost certainly more than a third. And what are we specifically doing to ensure that our major revenue source, i.e. our, for example, our lakes, are secure? Because we know property values plunge if you start to have algae blooms and certainly invasive aquatic plants. And that's not dealing with Branch Lake, which is our public water supply. That's just, and some of those fixes or some of those issues dealing with aquatic, invasive aquatic plants, or stormwater, or non-point source pollution going into our lakes, those are not expensive fixes now, but they're multimillion-dollar fixes if you should have one of those problems develop. So that's where I think a fiscal impact analysis can help to determine where is our greatest vulnerability in terms of where our money is coming in relative to where we're spending it? And how can we fix, perhaps with a minimal amount of dollars, a potential disaster down the line? The other point here I just wanted to highlight has to do with the remake of the 2002 waterfront master plan. Some people here I know remember that particular era. The 2015 visioning study that the city did indicated that citizens were overwhelmingly, in the 90, 90-some percentile, in favor of significant work along our waterfront. And we've moved on considerably since 2002, when that master plan was done. It's an incredibly important thing that it be done so that it feeds into, as the 2002 waterfront plan fed into the previous comprehensive plan, surely we can't do another comprehensive plan on the basis of that 2002 master plan. We need an updated one, and it needs to be, as the city's community's top priority, surely we have to have an updated waterfront plan to feed into that comprehensive plan. So I've just highlighted those particular items. For information, I can go on here and highlight a few other items in the categories that I was talking about. And that's, on the second page, we've, last year and the year before, I think in each one of our budget advice documents so far, we have highlighted the need for code enforcement staffing to return to the 2008 level of three full-time staff. And this is, this is a concern that rose loudly in the context of our green planning process. And it has to do, again, it came out of the process of trying to make sure that our lakes are being adequately supervised, I guess, or what's going on with building around these lakes is being adequately supervised. But it is, it also came to the fore that it's a financial issue, that Branch Lake, for instance, Green Lake, parts of those lakes are very far away from City Hall. And it's very possible to do a lot of things around those lakes, and your neighbors aren't going to tell on you, without informing code enforcement at all. And as long as that situation continues, and let's face it, the staffing and code enforcement cannot be in all places at all times. But as long as that situation continues, and people sitting around the table consulting on these green plan issues, as long as people can cite examples of individuals who've been doing building projects without getting any kind of permit, then we should see that as a problem in a number of sustainability areas. So this is a strong recommendation that we have continuing full-time code enforcement staff of three to try to improve their capacity to keep on top of what's going on further We've also recommended here a sustainability director be appointed. This is one of the requirements for the Community Resilience Partnership Program. And while it may be something, someone that can be designated within current staff, we should be thinking further, further down the line with a staff person who can be responsible for applying for funds that are so readily available at both the federal and the state level. Both domains have established funding of considerable note that a sustainability director could easily access. The city is eligible to apply for way more than it actually applies for. The problem, of course, which we recognize, is that it takes staff people to apply, and it takes staff people to manage and report. So you have to look at it, at that person as an investment in the city's capacity to secure further funds that multiply taxpayer dollars. I glossed some of the water issues here. One that has come, came up recently in the context of the Union River watershed summit has to do with the Branch Lake Dam, which of course, I just want to observe that the Green Plan, which was released in 2021, anticipated the need. One of our recommendations is that Branch Lake Dam be inspected and that necessary repairs be done. We didn't put it on a timeline quite as high as it suddenly became a high priority. But in the context of the summit, a key recommendation there was, let's not necessarily do the same thing that was done before with this dam. So clearly, there needs to be temporary repairs to manage the dam. But let's not necessarily just replace what was there previously, because there are now other options. Other options that could require less staff maintenance and actually be environmentally more satisfactory. And so a win-win on all fronts. So we're just really encouraging, from a financial standpoint, that the city look very carefully at what it's going to build as the permanent replacement or repair for that dam, and do it in what is going to be a long-term financially sustainable fashion, as well as an environmentally sustainable fashion. And we have people involved in our group. We have a very robust Union River watershed group these days. Thanks to that summit, we took in five more people interested in our activities, and some of them with considerable expertise. So there, it's not as though we don't have some folks locally that could provide some really good advice and connect the city with individuals who are doing this sort of work elsewhere in the state. One thing that also has recently come to the fore, and while groundwater testing was a recommendation in the Green Plan, once again, developments kind of somehow demonstrated that we were a bit anticipatory of real situations. Communities around Ellsworth are actually budgeting substantially for PFAS testing in city-town well water. And we'd strongly like to encourage the city. It's a comparatively minor financial investment, but it's a really significant issue, the PFAS contamination of groundwater. And so that is a minor expense, but something that other towns around us are investing in, and we think would be important for the City of Ellsworth to do the same. So the other, one of our recommendations here that falls into the category of planning now and expending a small amount of money in anticipation of having to spend a large amount of money down the line, has to do with sea level rise. One of our, one of our forums a year ago, November, focused on the impact of sea level rise on Ellsworth. And having a, having an engineering study, which would actually recommend specifically what could be done to address that now before the impacts get worse, would be really important. And one of the exciting things about doing it now is that it's pretty clear that the attempts to address sea level rise in this, in our downtown area could actually feed into the remake of the 2002 master plan for the waterfront, and could actually make it financially more doable. So you could combine those two efforts at the same time. A minor item in terms of actual expenditure is for the Public Works Department or some branch of the city to have allocated in its, in its budget the money to apply for Project Canopy Grant. I'm stealing the thunder a little bit from a June agenda item, but we've, thanks, thanks to, once again, the proclamation from the city with respect to Arbor Day, that's one of the required components of, out of many, for us to be a Tree City USA. And we are now Tree City USA 2023. So we've got two years running here. Those people at Project Canopy have told us that the city has to have some skin in the game. So the last two years, first the Ellsworth Garden Club, then Frenchman Bay Conservancy applied for Project Canopy Grants. We got them successfully administered. They're really excited by the fact that we have this tree nursery growing on trees for planting around the city. That, that has been, those have been big successes. But it's really important that the city demonstrate its commitment for this Tree City USA status by applying for a Project Canopy Grant. It is the easiest grant to apply for. It's like a minimum number of pages, and as long as you have, and surely you have a stronger bookkeeping staff than either Frenchman Bay Conservancy or the Ellsworth Garden Club, which has no employees whatsoever, it's a piece of cake for the city to administer such a federal grant. So I just want to say that there is a matching amount of money that is needed, but you can count the efforts, the volunteer efforts and the financial efforts of nonprofits in that. So it's important for the city to budget for that in what its public works crew does and apply for this, for this grant in the coming year. Okay. I'll just highlight three more items here, I think. That's all I've got, and then I'm going to let Gary have floor four. So food and farming, page four of the document, there's just one item there. It is actually a small item with respect to this year. It's going to be a bigger item down the line. One of the big recommendations in this section of the Green Plan is for Ellsworth to develop a food hub. And this is an economically-driven food hub, not just a food security hub. So for the city to allocate funds specifically to find out where the prime soils are, and to make, to make plans to secure those prime soils and encourage agriculture as an economic branch of City of Ellsworth, is a really important plank to have in place for us to apply for USDA grants that are of not inconsequential amounts, to be able to situate a food hub in the City of Ellsworth. So this is, this is kind of laying the foundation for future larger grants. That's basically one of the categories I was talking about. Under infrastructure, I understand from a source here to my left that the city has had, taking, had streetlights on its radar screen to basically take over ownership of the streetlights to introduce greener lights for a long time. We're asking, please, this is, this is a no-brainer financially, to just make this a priority in this fiscal year, make this change. This is, this is, we were unable to determine the exact cost of this for this year, but you'll start recouping immediately because you're paying for a company to run your streetlights when, you know, if you, if you just secure the streetlights, you don't have to have that expenditure anymore. And the other item here under infrastructure is to start basically a policy of electric vehicles wherever possible, and to, if that, if that involves a larger expenditure than what you would normally do, then have a top-up fund that is specifically to make those vehicles more, whether it is trucks that are used by Public Works, or whether it is e-buses. Let's get them on the road and reduce the expenditure that we have currently for fossil fuel-run vehicles. So that is basically the gloss that I think I was prepared to give. How would you like to proceed? Would you like me to answer questions on this part and then go to Gary?
Sure. While we do.
A statement.
Okay.
Maybe not a question. I'm sure there's many questions I should be asking, but I really like how you've taken the financial piece of this and added it to the environmental piece of this to look over a longer period of time. I like that.
Thank you.
If you grab the Green Plan, it goes further than just two years.
Right.
It's a 10-year plan.
Right. It just seems to look ahead, and it seems to, you seem to be able to present the fin- It just seems to look ahead and it seems to, you seem to be able to present the financial part and the impact over five years, 10 years, et cetera. Thank you.
This is really incredible. Thanks. My question, it might be for the rest of the council as well because, you know, I'm fairly new at this still, but some of these are obvious, like the LED lights we've seen as part of our budget packet through the IT department. And I think that's going through if we approve this budget correctly or wrong.
It's in the capital projects.
It's in the capital projects. Some of the mechanisms for these recommendations aren't immediately obvious to me, meaning like how would we as a council, you know, elect to say, apply for some of these grants or?
Sorry, it isn't immediately apparent how.
The mechanism that the council would use to say push forward some of the things that you're recommending, some of them are obvious because, you know, they're in the budget and you can consider your perspective on them and take that into consideration in voting, but some of them that we haven't seen elsewhere in the budget, I just don't know how that mechanically works, this council.
I can't speak to your process, but for instance, with grants, as a rule, unless, I think there may be a budget limit, if something is like a $10,000 grant, I don't know whether it needs to come to council for approval. But there is an approval process certainly for grants. One of the first item here was actually brought forward to council for approval. But council also has the capacity to simply say, we want you to explore grants that can help with funding some of these things. And while maybe this year it's too late to do that in your process, it certainly could be part of the directive to departments next year to say, don't just bring your budget request forward, but also tell us where you want to go to get grants to multiply the dollars we're going to give you.
Said this for a couple of years, so I might as well say it one more time. I think that there's always, for me, I'm kind of middle of the road on these types of issues because there are positives and there are cons to some of these initiatives in terms of implementing them. And nothing is 100%. Nothing is, if you do this, this is going to lead to an outcome. There has to be a balance. And if we don't, as a city, maintain that balance, we move in one direction and we forget about the consequences of other things. I'll just use some examples. It is completely unrealistic, and I'm using an extreme example, completely unrealistic for the entire state of Maine to have all electric vehicles. Because the reality is, where do you get the electricity to charge those vehicles? And then there's conversations about that. So I think it's important to make sure that we have an open mind and we have conversations about initiatives and honestly listen to all those perspectives. Because when we just go to one side of an issue and not understand it in entirety and be honest about that, we can make some pretty poor choices. So I think a lot of these initiatives, in fact, a lot of them are built into our budget discussions, and I think that we should do some of those. But I think we also have to be careful in terms of how far we go without having conversations, without understanding implications of those decisions and whether we can actually afford those long-term. You know, solar farms. Solar farms, how many trees have been cut down as a result of solar farms?
You're talking to somebody who's very sympathetic to your point of view.
So it's, you know, it's that, that's what I'm talking about, is that balance of saying, you know, solar is great, it has limitations. Let's understand all of that. So that's my only point, is that I think we have to have conversation because I think you know this, when we don't have conversations about this, it just turns into a battle that uninformed discussions take place. And so I just encourage, I think this is a great plan, and I think it invites that, but I just want to encourage the entire city to have those conversations, not just you, the entire city to be open about that so that we can reach good decisions and understand that there are two sides to every issue.
Yeah, and I just want to thank you very much for hosting this workshop and inviting us because that's, you know, we're about conversation. Those 40 public forums, they're not, you know, they're not people who are environmental free huggers necessarily that come to those forums. And I think the Union River Summit that we just had is a really good example where, you know, people were listening to the speakers and saying, okay, but what does that actually mean? What does that look like? What would be the process? And so basically, not just making pronouncements, but so do another forum like this and give us the information that we're asking for because we don't have enough information to make a decision. And that's essentially what is behind, for instance, that recommendation about the dam, the Branch Lake Dam. We got so far in this past forum where we heard about some very interesting alternatives to some of the dam architecture that currently exists here. And so, okay, so what does that mean? What would it cost? What is the process? Is that going to make the property owners happy? Is that going to make recreational fishing folks happy? You know, there are a lot, these forums have, we've gotten kind of, I think we've gotten pretty good at hosting these forums where we're not encouraging people to stand up and just pontificate about the virtues of green. We're trying to get to the details of how you do green practically. And, you know, just with your first example there, I just wanted to observe that in 1900, it would not have seemed feasible that we could get rid of horses and have cars because there wasn't the infrastructure to support them. There was the infrastructure for horses. And my mother, who wasn't around in 1900, but shortly thereafter, she remembered when cars were first introduced to Ellsworth and would recount what it felt like to be driving up Bridge Hill with an electric vehicle, no horse, and you were going up backwards. And, you know, to somebody in that particular era, it didn't seem like a very promising future with cars. But we gradually put in place an infrastructure to make them feasible. And that's to some degree what we're doing now, and the federal funds that have been made available around the electrification of our transportation system are such, they're certainly making it look possible. So I just, I think we have to have those conversations, like you said, and I just appreciate this opportunity to have this conversation with you folks. Okay, I think I've taken more than my time.
Yeah, I'm going to be real quick. A couple of things during the solar ordinance discussions, some of us wanted advocate for, if you cut an acre of trees, we find a place to plant new ones. You've got, you know, Project Canopy, we're asking money for and help with a grant. That's one of those where next week we're planting 100.
100 new trees of the city.
Down to the Jordan homestead to build our nursery up as the Green Ellsworth and the Garden Club and Frenchman Bay Conservancy, strong partners, the city of Ellsworth. Those are little things that we're trying to do to help mitigate some of the issues. We also wanted to require pollinators inside the solar fences. Have someone that's insured go in and tend the beehives. It's free honey. I was glad to see that they raised the fence on the bottom, up a little bit in the requirement so that small violets can get through, but the deer and the bear can't. So these are the some things that we've been working on in the background. One thing that I don't know where it is in the pipeline, have you got money in your budget to apply for the DEP 319 grant on Cadbrook and are you going to expend that and get going on that? I believe, wasn't that under consent agenda? That we had to do something, the quality of Cadbrook because of all the parking lots or drainage in it? That's one of our suggestions is that we get going on that. And I think Matt Williams upstairs is familiar with it.
I think he was planning to do it.
Yeah. So another one is trying to help us with water quality on our major lakes. Mary brought it up, but you've got a group of trained scientists out there, volunteers on branch and on green. And you may have some on beach that they just need a little bit of help with the equipment. And we can keep a better data set on the quality of our lakes because we all know that it's been here long enough, it's a heck of a lot cheaper to keep it clean and clean it up afterwards. Glad to see, and it was a public event right here, that you found a way to possibly access the Haynes Law. Michelle, you can remember, we had that conversation with Dwight Tilton upstairs about trading the harvesting rights to the Haynes Company and they'd give us that property. And that fell through, but I'm very pleased that that'll make that whole side of the lake protected and most of the Middle Basin because of the Fenn families. Let's go back to the lake. We need as a city to continue down the path of paving around Wingampar and Happy Town. We're getting way too much sediment in that lake, way too much. And I didn't bring it with me, but there was a picture out there that Brett Cicatelli has that shows so clearly. It shows a drone picture of the old Branch Pond Dam over here in Leonard Lake with the crystal clear water coming down the lake, running into the chocolate milk called Leonard's Lake because of the sediment that comes down from Graham. Those are some of the things we have to work on because where's all that sediment going? Into our bay and we're going to have to dredge again. That's one of those things where if we spend a little money now, it might prevent us from having to spend a lot later. What else did I have highlighted that you didn't cover? Streetlights. I was one of the original ones that said, come on, we've got to do this. I worked in Augusta with Maine Municipal when it was being argued at State House. So yes, we need to find a way to get the streetlights city-owned and controlled. Five years ago, I think we had a quote from a company to come in and do it, but since then, we've already changed everything on Myrick Street. There are some other ones that Bangor Hydro has changed, but that could pay for itself in a year and a half. I don't think manager Mosher or when he's got his badge on would like to have an electric vehicle sitting on the Bangor Road for six hours at an accident and run out of fuel. So there are some places we can't do it, but there are a lot of code enforcement cars, the fire department cars, stuff like that, that we could very easily start transitioning. Look at the money we're saving on our electric bill with the negotiation, a bunch of us did save about 26, 27% on our electric bill because it's coming off a solar field. Those are some ways that we can save money and not spend a lot. So I'd urge you to look seriously at electric vehicles where appropriate and the streetlights. And one dear to my heart, keep funding us. I'm a member of the Ellsworth Green Action Team. We're the ones that head up with your planning staff, the roadside pickup, all the yellow bags you guys have seen going to work in Bangor. That's our crew that's doing that free. All we ask for is safety equipment, yellow bags, and you guys pick it up when we're done. And you've done it very well and we appreciate that. I'd like to know how much tonnage we took up, but I'm not sure they're measuring it when they take it. But that's all I have that is important enough to cover. We have a website, greenellsworth.org. All this information's on there. The full plan is on there. You can zoom in. Tammy zooms in on some of our solid waste discussions and so does John. But we've got enough people in this city that are willing to step forward and give us some time. And thank you. Any questions? We'll sit here and listen.
Oh, we all go home?
We can't go. We have work.
Tammy was smiling.
I know, she said Tammy.
It's starting to get it.
Any other questions? Well, thank you.
Thank you for allowing us.
Thank you.
Next year, if we're doing this again, I'd love to do it earlier. In the budget cycle, because it's not our budget, we're asking for budgets that you people are working on. And having been there before, I get an idea of most of your budgets all set.
So what I would say, and you know this, is just ask in March to be on the April agenda. And then you could present during a council meeting and get the community involved and that would set the stage.
It would be helpful as well to hear which city departments would encompass which areas of these recommendations so you can kind of visualize in our packet where they would go, if that makes sense.
Yeah, most of my labels where they are.
So just to be clear, John, you're suggesting that we actually identify the departments where the recommendations are put. Rather than organize it by the order of the Green Plan, organize it by the order of departments, city departments?
I think organizing it both ways would be helpful. You know, we have the index of the recommendations from the Green Plan, but then we also, when we're considering the overall budget or capital improvement budgets per department, we can see these Green Plan recommendations.
Appreciate your time. And don't stage too late.
If there are any other suggestions about how we can organize this budget allocation document more usefully, that's great, we appreciate it.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
All right. So we're back to, I wasn't here for the last meeting, I did watch it, and I know social service piece will come up tonight, but is there anything specific that we were going to start with from your last discussion? Or is it just an ongoing raising issues and having general dialogue? So if I may, since the last budget workshop, did some research, quite a bit of research into ARPA spending and have identified several of the capital expenses that can be covered under ARPA funds if you also chose to do that. So Tony has prepared a capital budget with those items removed and separated out for potential ARPA expense. Do you have that shown?
And the amount that you said was, what, 665,000, something like that that's left over?
About 600,000.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks.
So, the top page is your summary sheet.
Thank you.
Brought the mill rate down to 7.3. After the summary sheet is the capital request as it sits in the budget book already. The pages three and four says a version 2.0 on the top. We've taken the moor roof, the fire department windows from the facilities line, IT's Microsoft Office and some software out. And on the bottom of that fifth page, there's like a little ARPA section.
I'm sorry, I lost your.
Right here. It's the last page.
Okay. Thank you.
The four items that we have moved out of capital total $264,108. That reduced your capital. That does not affect taxation. And doing that, and then the other change that we made was to Tina Howes was looking to go full GA because of the caseload and the need for that in this community. And her salary is eligible for ARPA, so her $60,000 salary got moved as an ARPA request. Those items and reducing your outside agencies to the same amounts as last year bring you down to 17.3. So, it's about a .25 change on your mill rate from last time we met.
So, what I'm getting from this is if we just keep having meetings every in-between, you'll cut it. Point two. No? No?
You think you're at the bottom of the cotton?
We're at the bottom.
So, can we go back to Tina's position? Because you're gonna end up having to fund it all next year.
Correct. It would alleviate a little bit this year.
Well, depending on if we identify other ARPA expenses, because you can allocate, you have to allocate 24. So, next year, we could allocate another year's salary in ARPA, but by the third year, yes, we'd have to absorb half of her salary. It's not a full salary. Half of her salary would be, because it's currently half. I mean, we currently pay her, so.
And she's split right now between city clerk and GA?
Right. Yep. And so, moving her to full GA just with the caseload just makes sense for the need of the community right now?
I personally don't want to use ARPA funds for operational funds. That's just a Band-Aid. It's not, it's not anything, I mean, doing it for capital projects that we're not gonna have to do again next year is, I think, is a smart way of doing it, but having it in operational, it's just, it's like what the school department's going through. They put all this money towards things and eventually there's the cliff and you're gonna pay for it. And it's just a Band-Aid.
Just an idea.
No, I get it.
Good.
It's a good idea and I understand it, but it's a temporary fix.
And this 17.3 does include the lease option of the five PD and then the highway and the water truck?
I think that's smart.
It does not include.
It does.
Oh, it does.
Oh, it does.
Yeah, that's included.
Okay.
How much of, like, there's a lot of extra money going for school stuff this year, right? That like some repairs and stuff?
From the school budget, you mean?
Yeah, I'm just wondering like that. Is that they're not gonna need as much next year or are they still gonna need as much next year? And then like the city budget, there's stuff in there that's gonna get fixed this year that they're gonna, might not need next year. I mean, is it gonna be lower next year or is it just gonna be higher? So, it's just gonna be more and more every year, no matter what?
I mean, I certainly can't speak for the school because I'm not responsible or participate in their budget process, but certainly the impression that I got from sitting through the workshops with the school department is that you, we can anticipate that there's going to be continued need in the school department. They postponed a lot of their capital projects in a concept or a plan to maybe put together a large capital project that they may go out and bond for, which incurs debt, but when you take on debt, that's payment. So, that's gonna, your budget's gonna have to increase to cover the payment of that debt. So, as far as the city side goes, you know, I mean, what we've seen this year, I certainly hope that we don't see anything like what we saw this year for expenses just in our operation expenses, our fuel costs and those type of things that we have little to no control over.
Right. The fixed stuff is gonna be the same or the cost of the stuff goes up, yeah. But I'm just wondering how much stuff's in there that like is gonna be fixed this year that?
For us or for the school?
Yeah, for us.
For us, we have.
Basically, for everybody.
For us, in our capital projects, we have some, we only have a few minor projects for City Hall, a couple of things in this building. There are more significant projects in the local roads budget that are being addressed and that part of the budget, which is separate from other capital.
That's how it would be.
There's some projects like the highway garage, like the overhead doors in the bathroom, some of those projects that are, you know, badly in need of being completed that won't have to be done in the future. But all in all, I mean, for every, for every one project we complete, there's 10 more we.
I see that, yeah.
Which is, well, not to harp on this, but this is why getting a solid capital plan for an extended period and knowing when that debt is resolved so that it can be a flattening of the impact of capital projects on the tax rate. Because we can, let's say, in three years, we're gonna expire this amount of debt, so then now we can take on these new projects and you start to keep it a little bit flatter. And then what drives the rate will be the operations, which is a little more manageable, a little more in terms of being able to think about. But when we don't do that, then we just have all these projects that we're trying to catch up on and we don't have the opportunity to plan when the debt's expiring and when we can take on new projects and how we're going to do that. So, I think that, to me, that is the urgency as we get, after we get through this budget, is to really start that work so that the council that's sitting here next year will have a great capital plan that everybody is aware of. And, you know, those things can change and happens, but it's a good grounding and I think it would go a long way to help the city.
Couldn't agree more.
I kind of just felt like by saving, say, $25 a year for the last 10 years, this cost us, now we're gonna pay 500 more this year because we saved $25 a year for the last 10 years. So, it's really, you're gonna just pay double 10 years down the road if you don't get care of stuff as it happens now, right?
Yeah, well, absolutely. I mean, for years, the city's been very fiscally responsible in the sense that some projects have been put off in the effort to maintain a certain, what was considered an acceptable mill rate and level of taxation for our citizens and.
Which has probably cost us more in the long run.
I certainly, I'm certainly not in a position to say that, but I think anytime you defer repairs, it's oftentimes the case that down the road, it ends up costing you more because labor costs go up, material costs go up. Certainly, nobody ever anticipated what we've experienced in the last year to year and a half that we would experience this level of increase for things, but it's certainly not likely to get cheaper. I mean, that's pretty much a guarantee.
Whatever, whatever ends up this year, it's likely that it'll be at least the same next year. It's not gonna be any time in the foreseeable future.
So, just in terms of this proposal, not a vote, just kind of a general nodding so that when the budget comes before us, something has to come before us. So, it's gotta be, so city staff need a little direction. I'm hearing the uncomfortableness with using ARPA for operations. So, if we restore that position into the operations, is everybody comfortable with the, these capital items being funded under ARPA or does that need more discussion?
I'm comfortable with it that way.
Me too.
That is a great idea. Were there other identified, we were really gonna look at roads and stormwater systems as being maybe not in the capital improvement budget, but not necessarily operational for city departments, things like road work?
You can't do roads. You can do infrastructure, water, wastewater and stormwater. So, right now, we don't have any specific plans out with the exception of the one large culvert project on the Red Bridge Road, which we kind of have talked about the concept of when we have that figure, we don't have the figure yet because it's not completed, the engineering work is not completed in the estimate, but when we have that potential for some ARPA fund, funding to be used for that project, but as far as rebuilding of roads, it's not unacceptable.
There's no obvious replacement for that salary in terms of the same amount of money for?
But, you know, I think utilizing these, the funds that have been identified as possible uses for ARPA is about 200-ish.
260.
So, that leaves us probably somewhere in the $400,000 neighborhood, which is probably a good chunk of some more significant project. So, the dam being one that's looming large in the future and certainly perhaps that culvert project. So, I think it leaves us in an okay position to be able to say we have this money still available for some, you know, more significant project rather than.
You spend it all this year, then you have none for next year to try to.
Right. Well, I think, well, a couple of things. One is we do have to have it identified, allocated by 24, so we do have to do that by next year anyway. And I've also heard some grumbling, and I don't know that it'll happen, but I've also heard some grumbling about the federal government looking at unspend ARPA funds and perhaps trying to recover those funds. So, I don't think they're gonna really pay much attention to our $400,000, but I'm saying, you know, it just is food for thought as we think about when we wanna, you know, utilize these funds. And at some point, I think you just commit them to a project that is worthy of them so that you get it done, you get the registration done, in the portal and, you know, and we're free and clear of just having this pot of money sitting here and people speculating and wondering, what are we gonna use it for?
Remind me when we have to use it up by?
24. December 24.
December of 24. So.
The next budget season, we can just put it all ready.
As be allocated by the end of next year.
Yes, and then spent one year, one year later, 25, right?
26.
26.
Okay, so we'd be able to use up some more funds in the next year, just like, well.
Possibly, yeah.
Okay. And I know I've said this several times since I've been on the council, but I really hope that once we get kind of caught up with the finances and get our audit, the next one at least started and that we can really, on Friday mornings, have a real meeting and concentration on the finances and talking about these different areas we need to study, such as the ARPA and the capital improvement, real plan, debt service, have a debt service plan and really look at those types of things on Friday mornings. It's been hard so far because we just haven't had the, been able to have the information, but now that finance is completely staffed, it would be great to be able to get that information and really take 20 minutes of our meeting or 25 minutes of our meeting to have a discussion on the finances so that next year, when we come to this, we'll be so, we'll be very much familiar with, you know, what you're gonna be presenting in the budget and where we are in actuals, not just budget to budget, but actuals.
And make recommendations to the rest of the council as well.
And make recommendations to the rest of the council.
Yeah. The auditor was here today and they have stated, which they've stated before, that they are very much planning to, and their intentions of wrapping FY '22 audit up by the end of the month.
So, hopefully they do, that they can come to the June meeting and?
More than likely July, maybe June.
So, they have to do it.
And then, there was already conversations about FY '23, so their plan is as soon as they wrap this one up, to jump right into FY '23, so.
That would be great.
Yeah, because that's about the time for a pre-audit.
Yeah.
In June.
In June, so.
This might be a good segue. Could we see what the mill rate would look like with the sort of the recommendation of taking out the salary position from the ARPA funds, comparing what you have for outside agencies from last year's budget versus their current request?
Just putting Tina back in brings you to 17.35 and leaving the outside agencies at the same amount that they got last year.
But if you upped their.
If I up them?
To what they're requesting this year, which is the $80,550?
While Tony's doing that, we can pivot to the social services.
Segue.
Segue. That's a good segue.
17.38 or so.
Just to see, so she's calculated.
It's minimal.
As the same as last year's request. Just to see what it might look like.
She's at 17.38. So, I had raised this question and I want to start with this, this does not pertain to any specific request, so this isn't about a specific request, it's just a general statement. I just find it difficult to really vet these requests in a straightforward way, in an equal way, fair way. It's really been more of a just kind of, here they are, these are the historical ones and they've been the same year over year. They've requested pretty much the same amount year over year, but when we go to the policy, probably 90% of those don't meet the policy requirements in terms of what exists in statute. And the benefit to taxpayers is somewhat questionable in many of those scenarios. And that's not to speak about the value of those organizations and the work that they do provide. And so, I, just for me, it just raises that question of getting to a place that there is a consistent way to look at the requests. And if we have to revise the policy, revise the policy or the, is it an ordinance? It's not an ordinance.
It's just a policy.
It's just a policy.
Yeah, it's just a policy. Revise the policy if we need to do that so that it fits better, it aligns with what the community wants. But also the accountability for when the money's going out. And this has been something that we've wrestled with as a council for a while. It's something that I tried to push. We don't get reports back in terms of how the dollars have been used when they were assigned in a specific manner. And so, it's just that accountability. If we're going to use taxpayer dollars to fund support, there just needs to, I just think there needs to be a better system from start to finish and I think it's lacking.
So, there's a social services, which is social services, and then there's the donations that we make to the grant, the Y. Those aren't under that policy.
Right, those aren't under the policy.
And they should be, and there is an application and they, there should be, like the Y used to give everyone from Ellsworth because we gave a donation, everyone from Ellsworth would have a donating town membership rate, which actually numbered the amount that we actually gave them. And so, there were things like that that were provided. And then the social service agencies provide an application that talks about the amount of money that they receive in state and federal funding.
How many Ellsworth residents that?
How many Ellsworth residents that they serve versus county and, you know, and some things like that. And at one point, we did interview them separately from the council. It was not popular because they wanted the opportunity to talk to the entire council. But we have denied people. One year, I think they made more money because the entire council gave donations because we had to tell them, no, they didn't fit the criteria. So, they actually made more money from the council. So, there is a process for the social services. The others. The others, like I said, the, the Y and the grant and some of those have always been, in the past, a, a discussion of the need in the city. Oh, I'm sorry, the, if I think he's watching this, he's calling me. Is the, it, it, then we get to the discussion of, of the worth of their services to the city and to the entire city, especially the grant, I mean, it's iconic, and so, you know, it's pretty hard to say no to them. But there's a discussion every single year, at least in the past, there's been a discussion every single year about those types of, but they're not, in the, you know, in the Chamber of Commerce and, you know, all of those that are, that are different than social services.
So, which ones really, really, like, like you say, the grant benefits, I mean, like, are there other ones, like, they have, they have other ways of getting funding, they don't need it necessarily, I mean, we're not funding them completely or anything? They're just asking for, like, if you cut out all those, how much money would that save a taxpayer?
Well, the, the grant and the, and the YMCA.
We're just trying to get a general overview of, if you cut every bit of it out, how much would that save each taxpayer? Is it like, it's gonna save them twenty-five dollars apiece because, you know, or is it gonna save them hundreds? I mean, I'm just wondering what an impact it really has. I don't, I'm not individually picking out any one thing either.
Yeah, and I don't, I mean, I don't think it's individual things that we, we should look at it individually, I think it's, when you're, when you're looking at the budget, it's, it's a combination of a whole bunch of things make a difference in the mill rate. It's not, you know, one thing.
Right.
So it's kinda hard to, so this one will save a person ten dollars, so we're not gonna do it, it's only ten dollars, but this one's twenty-five dollars, but the two of them make it thirty-five, you know what I mean?
I'm not, I'm not even going that, that way, I'm just wondering what the total impact is, and, I mean, if you did cut it all out, is it a huge substantial amount, or is it...
I think it depends on what you're doing.
And for, and for this year, it's one, for future years, it's, it will change, depending, you know, more, more organizations. I'll give you an example of where I get lost in this, is, we had an organization ask for in excess of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, not last year or a year before, and, and the organization serves a lot of Ellsworth residents, but if you understand that the nature of the organization and the funding and everything, then you would look at it, when you have that knowledge base, you would say, well, what are they using the dollars for? No matter whether it's ten thousand or a hundred and twenty, or whatever the city gives, what are they using it for, what are the gaps? Are they being paid for the services that they're saying serve two thousand Ellsworth residents? Well, were those services that provided to those two thousand captured over here, but they wanted to make up a gap over here? And I'm very familiar with this because that's what I do, and so, and it's not to, those, those organizations need funding and they look for that kind of support. But you take that kind of an organization, and then you have a smaller organization in the city that says, well, we're gonna, we're gonna feed a hundred people, we need five thousand dollars to do that. Well, how do you make those decisions? What's the criteria? Are we, and, and, and sitting around this table, some members of the council said, well, that's a big organization, what I just said, they don't need the money, and then the, the smaller one, well, they, they certainly do. Well, is that the criteria? Is, if you're too big, you don't get funding? Is, what is the criteria that we base it on?
In private world, there is some thought, and I'm not saying this is the right thought, but this is a thought, that you either give, you either give to everybody that comes through the door, you give to nobody that comes through the door, without emotions. Everyone that comes through the door gets a twenty-five dollar gift card, or no one gets any. And I'm not saying that's right, but I'm saying that there has to be some sort of across the board, otherwise, people at this table may advocate for the grant one year and the Y the next year, et cetera. So if there's some sort of a, a framework that, that could be established, I, I think that could be helpful, and I don't know what that framework is, and I, I hate to be this mean person, but at some point, we have to say, is it fair to send Joe's family the tax bill? And then give it away to Frank's family over here? And when I say that, I'm just picking at, you know, is that right, that we, that we tax every citizen in Ellsworth, and then we take a portion of that tax and give it to a group that we find important here at this table, but three years from now, that may not be important to the people at the table? I just have to ask that question.
I, I just feel that, I don't think it can be that straightforward, I, I wish it could, but if we opened it up and said, well, give something to everybody, we're gonna be in deep trouble, we're gonna have a lot more than a two mil increase.
Than, than...
But, but the thing is, is that, for instance, the grant, I, you know, and, and this is just my personal opinion, but, you know, I think that is, that is an incredible gift to, to the city of Ellsworth, and not only is it that, and not only, you know, do they provide entertainment, but they also help our businesses. You know, when that, when, when the grant is having a show, the restaurants downtown are packed, and the, the bars are packed, because people go out to eat before they, you know, they, they go to the, to the grant. But not only that, it also brings notoriety to the city of Ellsworth, because that theater is very well-known in the entire country. So, it, because it's, it's one of the very few that actually have live performances with children, and I mean, there's a lot of things that make that an iconic place. And so, it's not just the monetary or the service that they provide, it's what it also brings to the city of Ellsworth. And it's the same thing, Friends in Action, you know, they, they, they work on an almost complete volunteer basis, but they provide an incredible service to the seniors of this, of this city, and they came about because there's another organization that's out of Bangor that's supposed to help seniors, but they don't have the resources to help Ellsworth at the same time. And so, it, it is, you know, it is very subjective, because, I mean, it, it's, it's what is, you know, what the value is to a certain person. If, if you're a person that doesn't have any senior citizens in your family and, and, you know, you don't worry about things like that, probably the senior center's not gonna be that important to you. However, to the people that do, it's incredibly important to them, because we don't have any of those services, other than that.
And I, I agree with everything you're saying, what I'm saying is that those are emotional decisions.
They are.
And, and I'm with you. I, you know, I'm, I understand what you're saying, but I could have that soft heart with every organization. And at some point, there has to be emotional decisions pushed off the table and financial decisions made, and I've realized it's incredibly hard. Main Street to have a grant is, is wonderful, but five years from now, the council may not see it that way. And I'm just, I have trouble taxing somebody when they could be giving their own dollars to the grant. That's my challenge, I said it last year, and I'll say it again, I struggle with that. I struggle with sending Frank a tax bill, and then, because seven people think that this is a, a good organization, those are emotional decisions, and Frank, who's paying the bill, is quite capable of making his own donation to the grant.
But the, the funny thing is, is that is the same argument that we get when we give, people think that their taxes are going up, and they say, well, why do you put so much money in the fire department? Doesn't matter, my taxes shouldn't go to that, because I live way out on the other side of Scott's Neck, and they're never gonna get, my house is gonna burn down by the time. Or the people that say, well, why are you giving so much money to the school department? But I don't have any kids in school, why is my dollars going to it? So it's kinda, it's, it's one of those things, I, I personally think that, that at some point, we have to look at the city holistically, and, and have, you have to have some of those subjective decisions, or else, I mean, if we, we'll put ourselves in a box and we could, I think, lose some real jobs. It'd be like, you know, taking Norton Park, which, I mean, people in the entire region use, and there's a lot of people that say, that is just a ridiculous piece of waste of property, it could be taxed property, but it's a, it's a gem for economic development, and it's a gem for a lot of the people in the city, so, how do you, how do you make that decision, right?
And I agree with you, I love Norton Park, I think it's the best thing that Ellsworth could have done, but not everyone that's paying the bill thinks that way, so.
So it's, it is, it's, it's hard to make those decisions, and it's, it's hard to have cri, I guess that was a very long-winded way, and I apologize for saying that it's, it's impossible to have criteria for everything, it really truly is.
But we could have caps. We could say that we start the discussion with, this is the amount of money that the city is going to have available for this a, as a council, and then that all of the requests, because next year, there could be double the amount of requests. And if, if it's just open-ended, that's, then you get into, that, that subjective becomes even more subjective, and, and to me, that's not a, that's not a good process. That, it would be better to say, you know what, this resource is highly needed, we, and they're the only organization that does it, I, and you make the case, but you limit it.
Well, I was just gonna say, this year, it went up a hundred thousand from last year.
Yes.
The asks, and there's not a lot of new asks, so it's just the same entities asking for more money to the tune of a hundred thousand dollars, so.
Yeah, and so the question is, and I apologize, I wasn't here for that meeting, but I don't think, but the question is, so why do you need the increase in money? Is it because you wanna try? Or is it because there's a, you know, you've lost a grant, or, you know, something, something's happened, or you have a capital plan that you wanna do, or something like that? I definitely agree that we don't just take a cart launch and give them everything that they want, I mean, if they're gonna ask for additional funds, there needs to be a reason for it.
Better services.
Right, or some, yeah, or something like that, but, and maybe an application for these types of things, I know everyone does a write-up, but I, the application form for the social services, I think specifically asks, how much of your money goes to administration? How much do you receive in grants? How much do you receive, you know, from donations, and, and maybe that's the thing.
Well, we've had other, outside organizations' requests, something like that, you know, we want to know what services the city wants, so that we can show you where the Heart of Ellsworth might ask for that.
Yep.
Chamber.
And I think that if we do give money, or when we do give money, that before they can even be considered for money for the next following year, they're gonna have to show us what they...
Yeah.
It would be part of the policy that we set, 'cause I think that's what we're missing. There were requirements for some of those organizations to come back to the council on a quarterly basis, and we don't see them anymore.
Yeah, it would have to be spent, like, on Ellsworth stuff only, so they can't, like, go spend it in Hancock or Lomond or whatever, it'd have to be maybe something of that sort.
I think reframing how we're conceptualizing these as, not donations to these organizations, but payment for services, that, for the most part, I think are good services and are done with really low overhead and a lot of volunteer power. And these organizations are, for the most part, really good at data-driven evaluation, that's how they get by, I mean, in the nonprofit world, that's how you make decisions, that's how you fundraise, they just need to be required to present, evaluate, present the projects from last year, you know? Justify why they're gonna be funded again the following year, absolutely.
Are there any, like, that are very concerning about, like, why we shouldn't, maybe, you know, they have tons of funding anyway, and we really shouldn't even have to help them? Or they just ask because they can get some money out of Ellsworth, or is there, I mean...
The YMCA is a good example, I think, to answer your question, if you will. So they're vetted through the REC Commission, essentially, the REC Commission says, we have these projects, and I think, for the most part, the Y fills the role that a city rec department, in a lot of ways, would. The Y, the, the REC Commission comes up with ideas, we want to do this, we want Demire Fields taken care of, set up, we want the ice rink set up, maintained, we don't have a staffer for it, we don't have the, the person power for it, so we're gonna basically outsource those services to the Y. The Y's gonna show, you know, the hours spent, the work spent on it, here's their budget for it, and the REC Commission uses the Y for those services. The same with the grant, the, the REC Commission wants to have outdoor concerts, they want to have educational material, the grant justifies their request by saying, we're gonna provide you with these services. And the REC Commission does look into it, and they say, we're not gonna fund operational expenses, we're gonna fund these programs, 'cause that's what we want. And in turn, that's what the council asks and approves for the REC Commission to do, 'cause that's what...
Do Ellsworth residents get a discount at the Y, or...
I don't know if they still do, I haven't been a member in a long time. They used to, I don't know if they still do.
They, they have a, a weekend on Saturday and Sunday that residents can go in and use the facility on those days. That's, that was one of the, so that's what they allow, as a, as a benefit. The, whether it's the Y or other organizations, one, for me, what I liked was when we specifically gave to a, to a fund that was directed to Ellsworth residents for heating assistance. And we said, that's where it's gonna go, and that, because it's a straight line, it's a straight line to say, we have residents who are maybe in dire need of this, let's put funding to that, and we know that that's where the funding's going to go, as opposed to allocating money that just kinda goes in the general fund, and then we get a report back saying that we serve two thousand Ellsworth residents. I, I think there's some, some value in, in having that kind of vetting with some organizations, just by the nature of what they do, other organizations, that wouldn't work so well that you're really funding a position that can provide the support and the service. So I, I think that can help to the discussions when, when we get there, in terms of some of those organizations are trying to direct the funding in a specific way.
So we do have some in the social services, and I just, so, like, the WIC program, we've given them fifteen hundred dollars a year forever, and this year, unless we change it, we're gonna give them a eleven thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars, is what's in this budget. And, you know, the same thing with, Heart of Ellsworth has done a lot, but, you know, that's ten thousand dollars, that's in a, you know, we, last year, we didn't fund them at all, but we, we used to fund them at five thousand dollars. So, I mean, there are some things in here that, there are some really, really large jumps.
But they did a specific, we gave them funding, but they did a specific thing for the city, right? Like, what was it?
Yes, last year, they did beautification, so they, they got twenty-eight fifty, but that, Michelle was actually in that rec section of the budget. It says beautification, H O E, or something, I think.
That was Friends of Heart of Ellsworth, yes, yeah.
We were, we were willing and gave them, because that was a service they provided.
They'd shown in the two, in both sections for a couple of years, but I'm hoping to just have them in one section for ease of their...
Yeah. And I'm not saying that they shouldn't receive it, I, what I do wonder, with the WIC program, you know, why we're gonna go up ten thousand dollars with them?
Well, that's what they asked for, that, that's...
That's what's in the budget, if we pass every...
We'll have funded...
Is it, I thought we, I thought you just moved what they carried for, is that not what's in the budget?
So, today, just to give you an idea of what your mill rate would look like if you funded at the same levels as last year, I changed all these to last year's levels.
And Glenn, you just, you just moved forward, whatever the request was, you put it in, it's the starting place.
Correct.
Yeah, your budget book just has their requests.
Yeah.
I can't read it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I'm like...
My eyes are so bad, what does it say at the bottom? Here we go.
So that brings you down to thirty-seven, seven fifty, and these two in bold did not actually request this year, but I still put their last year's numbers in, just to get an idea on the mill rate.
Yeah, if they didn't request...
Yeah, I, I'm not willing, that's...
If they don't request, or they don't take the time to come to us to present, I just don't think we should fund them.
And then we did have some no-shows this year, correct? Did anyone keep track of that?
And there was only, and Friends in Action on here was in here twice, so that's only in there once, not really.
Yes.
I would, and just for what it's worth, some entities did reach out about coming and were told that. Based on their request or whatever, that it was up to them. They didn't necessarily have to come.
Oh, okay.
So I would be a little bit reluctant to just blanket that.
Perfect. And then do you have the Heart of Ellsworth for anything?
Besides the, the same twenty eight fifty from last year. They requested ten thousand this year.
Is that in both locations though?
Just in this one location.
If, how, cause I know Heart of Ellsworth is working with the city to do a lot for the downtown.
Yeah.
So, but is that something if, when they come to need to be funded for, cause when they gave their presentation, there was money that they were going to need as they moved forward. If it's not budgeted here, but is that money that could come from TIF or something like that where it's economic development for the downtown? So that we're like, so if we put them to last year's funding, we're not shutting them off from participating and helping them with, um. Their, their future projects. I mean, I'm on that steering committee and you are too. And, um, there's some really great things I think that they're gonna be doing, but I just, so I don't wanna shut them off, but I'm just wondering if there's another way of funding.
So you're, you're saying to give them the twenty eight fifty from last year, but then additionally fund them via TIF if that's.
I, I'm, I'm not saying any dollar amount. I'm just saying if we did, if the, if the council as a whole agreed that we wanted to fund at the same rate as last year. If Heart of Ellsworth, because we know, we know for a fact that they're working on that, um, Main Street America initiative, that we wouldn't be saying we're not gonna support that initiative anymore. I, I definitely wouldn't wanna do that.
This was last year's correct twenty eight fifty was there. So.
Yes.
Would you be interested in increasing that a little bit more or, or anybody to?
I think what, I think, I'm certainly not, don't need to speak for you, Michelle.
No, it's fine. I'm not doing well.
I, I think what my deep initial is. Rather than arbitrarily throwing a number on there, waiting to see what their actual need is for that plan and program. And when they come back to the city with a hard, fast figure of, yes, we need, you know, five thousand dollars, let's just say, for, for this part of this program. It, could the city contribute that? And I think we could certainly, and if it's tied to economic development, then TIF funds are, I mean, we have three hundred and eight thousand dollars in undesigned TIF funds. So I mean, there's money available in that realm, which would certainly be applicable to Heart of Ellsworth. In their, most of their endeavors. They will, I think, uh, Cara presented that eventually to join the Main Street America, they'll need, um, one-third of their yearly budget to come from the municipality. Which would probably be something like sixty, seventy thousand, I think.
Yeah, something like that. So I was trying to, didn't actually go back. We've listened to so many of these. I can't remember if they were doing the ten thousand.
The Y is under the recreation section.
It's this area here.
You do the same to rec, didn't you? Set that back to last year's funding as well.
The other thing I think's important is they do put on the meet the candidates and that really is specific for.
Yeah.
Ellsworth. So I would be in favor of funding that piece as well.
Do we pay them for that or they just put it off?
Uh, the city volunteer, pays for IT every time.
They wanna do that summer, that summer concert series.
Yes.
That was the other thing too. So I think they, they pretty much list out what they want for the ten thousand here. If they would be using it for. And I don't think those types of things can be come out of the.
Well, justification of the grant funds that they bring in as well is pretty substantial.
I could just say that everyone that's presented their case, um, looking for money. I like them all, but at some point, um, you know, like you're talking about the grant, certainly it's wonderful, but at some point. We've gotta think about financial decisions, not emotional decisions, because I could have that case about many different organizations. But I think we're at the point where we need to make some financial decisions, not emotional decisions. And along those same lines, if I could, I used my tax bill, um, that it went up five hundred dollars in ten years. And it looks like it's going up five hundred dollars in one year, um, approximately. I, I'm gonna ask you that question later.
Probably more this evening.
But, so at some point, there has to be some financial decisions, not emotional decisions, and they're not easy to make. I'll be the first to admit. I have a small business. I cut two staff members in January. Did I wanna sit in front of a small group and tell them I was gonna do that? No. However, it had to be done. And I did. And it was a terrible experience. And, but I did it because it had to be done. It wasn't emotional. It was financial. And the city, now, I totaled up the number of people that took a paycheck out of the city of Ellsworth. On the ci, in twenty-two. Now, half of these could be the election person that worked one time in the year, okay? So we've gotta salt this down in a big way, but. We've got a hundred and ninety-eight people on the city side and four hundred and sixty-three on the school side. That took some sort of a paycheck, us included, took some sort of a paycheck out of the budget. And. Every time I see somebody's budget, I'm thinking, wow, that's pretty lean and mean budget. And then I see the next department, that's pretty lean and mean budget. Every time they present it, it seems lean and mean, but you put them all together and you send the bill to Mr. Taxpayer, it's a big bill. And at some point, I'm not saying this year, but at some point, we have got to, uh, get lean and mean and make some financial decisions, not emotional decisions. And it's a real tough job, but it has to be done at some point. It can't be done in this season, obviously. There's so much that's come at us, but at some point. We've got to rethink how things are done.
And I would agree with that. And it goes back to the finance committee, looking every week for, you know, and, and having a better understanding of where the dollars are going and.
And it's tough. It's, it's.
And play, and doing better planning and getting, you know, funding from other areas too, but, you know, honestly. I know we do, we've done a good job of getting, um, you know, some grants and.
We brought in over five million dollars.
Yeah, so I mean.
Grants and.
You imagine if we.
This year alone.
Could you imagine if we weren't prepared and we didn't get those, you know, and, and how much more can we get?
But we, to your point. It's not, it's not easy. And when, when there have been attempts to consolidate and trim budgets and be innovative. That is not stood very well, um, by the council or by the community. And the pushback is amazing. It's like. We'd want you to cut. Oh, don't do that though. Don't, don't cut that. Why, why, why did you do that?
Exactly.
What are you doing that for? That doesn't make any sense. And, and, cause everybody's got their own perspective about what's important to them. And you, and a lot of times you can't even get past what I was saying before earlier is that, that, that middle ground of being able to say, let's have an honest discussion about it. Let's not just go to the side that I'm so passionate about this one thing that I'm gonna blindly advocate for it. And if you dare raise any kind of question about it. Then that's just, you know, I'm not gonna talk to you. That is not a way to get, to move the city forward. And we have to understand that there has to be discussions about that, about. Where can we make some changes, do things a little bit different that can realize some financial gain and some gain benefit for the city? We've gotta be able to do that or we'll never do it. Um, and then I think the other struggle that we do have as a city is. We are a service center community, which means something different than other communities, but we, we, we wanna fund ourselves. Like we're not a service center community. And that's problematic. And then, not to mention our roads and the miles that we have, that, that's a whole different issue. But, but, so it's, it's just this constant push and pull and dynamic. And, and I think we just, we, we have to keep moving forward. I think the best thing we can do is just get to the place where we can have conversations and honestly debate things and then come to some compromise. Instead of just butting heads and saying, well, if you don't believe me, then I'm not gonna give in. We've gotta move beyond that because that will move the city forward. Um, and, and I think will create new opportunities, but it's gonna, it's gonna take some, some time. And, um, so I, I'm hopeful that, that that's the direction we're headed and I, I think we can get there.
I think so too. And I, I don't think it's always emotional. I think it's, some people just see value in places that other people don't. And that's those great discussions that we can have. Yep. And it, it make them a financial.
I'll give you an example of what you're talking about. Um, Ellsworth Green Party, um, does the roadside cleaning, okay? So Nicole Grodowski's father comes into my office and slaps down a whole bunch of flyers that flew off furniture and was on the roadside. And I'm like, I don't wanna be that guy. I didn't know they were on the roadside. He comes in and says, these were all on the roadside. And that one person coming in and doing that, we changed how we market and how we flyer furniture, so we're not contributing to that. Okay, now, he come in a little bit rough, but he should have been because there was a lot of flyers up and down the road that I never even knew about. And there's one little thing right there that, maybe two bags of trash or whatever, but just by him doing that and throwing it down on the floor. And I wasn't there, but he was a little bit gruff, but he needed to be. We had contributed to two bags of flyers on the side of the road and bagged.
I saw Gene with those flyers throwing them. I don't know.
But we made changes and, and good changes.
I, I showed him where they were.
Throw them in the shit.
You know, there's, there's an example of, of what little bit that they were doing.
I called the PD. They wanted to write you a letter and to get Glenn talking out of it, so.
No, and, and he came by this year and said, wow, you've really made an improvement. And that's just by his volunteering of doing that. That's a little small thing.
I've got an idea. So the, the cop plan steering committee's been meeting and part of the first phase is to sort of categorize. Most of the chapters are mandated by the state. You have to focus on your wastewater plan. You can focus on your solid waste plan, et cetera. But in addition to that, the committee's coming up with a specific, you know, how we be a hub, service center, tourism, because we're in that area as well. So adding these categories. I think piggybacking off of this idea, identifying categories more specifically than just, you know, service and outside organizations. Coming up with, say, tourism, green development, waste, recreation department, which we already have, uh, social, health, whatever the categories are. Coming up with, based on previous numbers, uh, sort of a budgetary limit for each. That, that way the council gets to say, and in concert with other commissions and organizations, we want to focus on, say, green development. We're gonna put, you know, a cap of forty thousand or ten thousand dollars or whatever. And so we develop applications with those categories. Under consideration. So when organizations apply, they say, we're gonna apply, maybe we do this and this and this, but for this application, we're gonna say. You know, this is green development services. We're gonna do this project. It's gonna cost this amount of money. Now we have a line item under that category in the budget. We get to say, alright, we've asked organizations to apply under one of these many categories. And now we're starting to fill up those budgets.
It's almost like grant scoring.
Exactly. And we're, it's, or a request for, um, you know, RFP for like, and they'll come up with creative ideas to do things pretty cheaply, I think, with low overhead, as they tend to do. And then evaluations, absolutely. You know, six months later, here's how our, uh, project is going. We're gonna need to do it again next year or we're gonna, um, change it. And then whatever we can also put under the umbrella of existing commissions as well to sort of vet. Because I, I think most of the commissions are, are gonna be good at that. And it keeps, you know, additional work off the council's desk as well. That's, that's what I've been thinking about.
I think that's an interesting idea.
It is. So, Tony's gonna kill me, but I actually don't know what I'm voting for anymore. Because, you know, like looking at this, I, we don't need the backup. I know, right? We don't need the backup, but is there any way to get these pages again? Um, I've got notes all over here on the pages that.
These pages?
Those ones, yeah. Just so that we can have a, I, I don't need the backup. I don't even need tabs. Just give me one booklet with all those worksheets printed off. So that I can go through and see what it is that we've changed. That would be really great.
With the original amounts for these outside agencies or with last year's funding amounts?
I, I think at this point, we go to what you've presented because it seems like that's where we're at. And maybe.
There or originally?
The, the, um, here. Last year's. And by doing that, I think we, if we, if we have another meeting, that we can take that summary sheet. And this is it. This is what this department is. This is what this department. And I think at that point, if we can all be prepared to say, this department, I. I think it needs to be cut. And this is my, these are my suggestions, just to be able to vet that out so that there's the one last opportunity for, for us to kind of give some guidance. And if we're all nodding our head, that, that's the go-ahead. That change can be made. And then we'll, I, I think we'll be ready at that point for a budget to come to the council. For the, for the final, this, where we can actually discuss and vote. And yes, there may be some minor modifications, but, um.
Yeah, I would love to see that.
You want sheets on every department?
Mm-hmm. But just, just print off, not the backup, like I said, and you can staple it all together. Just, I don't know how many, you know, I know that's a, that's several. But, um, if, if just that front sheet.
Some didn't change.
Right, some didn't.
Some haven't changed.
They've all changed.
I'd like to see the whole, the whole thing, even if it hasn't changed.
I mean, cause I have notes and I don't know if they'd made it into the budget.
And I might add.
And the same thing with revenue. No, go ahead.
I might add that they've changed because everyone has tried and tried and tried to narrow costs. Which is a good. Everyone has tried to narrow costs.
So would you like a special council meeting to review this version two point oh?
Point one.
Packet thing?
This would just be another workshop.
One more workshop.
You tell us what you need, a reasonable amount of time. Um, I don't think Monday is reasonable for us to say, could you pull that together and then we'll meet Monday?
We have a council.
Oh, we have a council.
We have a council meeting Monday.
So that's good.
Next Thursday, we, we have a budget workshop, I believe, already scheduled for the eighteenth, which is next Thursday. You're not here.
How about the twenties, Monday, the twenty-second?
That's, oh, sure.
Cause we, we have time because the, the budget's gonna come forward in the June meeting.
In the June, I'm looking. I just.
The twenty-second is, I'm fine with that.
I absolutely have nothing.
Is that enough time?
Holy cow.
Can we also have a list of like any new employees? I, I don't, I don't know based on this, all the backup information, how many new employees or positions.
You don't mean people, you mean positions.
Like, like positions were, were.
In this budget, you mean? Oh, yeah, there's only two.
Oh.
Well, three. Highway, which we've reviewed in this current formation is a half year. So again, that one. Fire, which was agreed to, um, previously to, in order to accommodate their staffing of four per shift. And then, well, GA going full-time and so hiring a city clerk.
Okay, so two and a half.
So two and a half is what's in the budget for additional staff.
So the twenty-second works? Twenty-second, so.
I didn't have a budget meeting for next week. I have a Harvard Commission meeting.
There isn't one. We will, we will.
We won't have one anymore.
We'll have regular meeting Monday. We'll have the, um, next workshop on the twenty-second. With the plan that we'll complete our work and that we'll leave the time for the staff to prepare the budget for the June meeting, get it posted and all of that. If, if for some reason we can't complete our work, we still have time to do that before things have to be posted. But we'll try to do that on the twenty-second.
I think we're really close.
I believe the city budget has to have a public hearing at the council meeting. Yes.
Yes.
And that's a two-week advertisement. So for June, I would need a final budget by Friday, June second to be able to get it in the newspaper, um, twice as a public hearing notice.
And is it just, I can't remember how it is, but it just says that the city council will be hearing. I don't think it has a dollar amount, so we could make some adjustments even if it came there, so.
Yeah, because last year at the council meeting, we made changes.
Right, yes.
Could I ask one more thing, Tony? I was gonna ask it tonight, but I think it makes more sense in, in Michelle's request. Uh, could you take a, an arbitrary home of, like last time you did, uh, you don't have to do it tonight. Uh, in this report, we cost about two hundred thousand dollars or three hundred thousand dollar home with the new numbers. I, I don't care what the mod rate is. I don't care what the valuation is. I care what the cost is.
What's the, what, did it end up seventeen thirty-eight?
Yeah.
Seventeen thirty-five.
He said that there was a five percent across the board increase in valuation.
So that home at this mill rate would be, um, taxes would be three thousand four hundred and seventy dollars.
What was the cost of the home?
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand.
So, and at what if the rate is now, so it'd be three hundred and twenty-five dollar difference. Is that what you got?
Yes, okay.
Three hundred and twenty-five different from last year.
Mm-hmm.
A two hundred thousand dollar.
A two hundred thousand.
Where we are right now.
Four hundred thousand would be seven hundred bucks-ish.
That includes outside organizations nearly a full request?
That's last year. Just going back in.
That's last year's.
I just have to work a few more hours overtime.
So.
Day.
Two hundred and fifty thousand would be four hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents.
Since we're having another.
Ick.
I know it's a lot. Better than what we started with.
I know it's a lot, but it's like over the last ten years, like I said, you saved twenty-five dollars a year. You're gonna pay for it this year. I mean.
She was concerned that outside organizations seem to maybe not, just like we were talking about ten minutes ago, outside organizations weren't necessarily.
Oh, no.
Don't even talk to me about fuel.
I put seven hundred and fourteen dollars in my truck the other day, fuel.
Or that commission's gonna hear from them.
I was like, oh, God.
I think she can ask the rest at next budget meeting.
Alright, so Monday's our regular meeting. The following Monday, the twenty-second, we'll have our final workshop. And then the budget will be done and.
Ah, it's over. Can I get that in writing?
Yeah.
Is it my tax bill's gonna be next year?
Alright, we're adjourned.